Okay, good afternoon everybody and welcome to this Norwich Aerie Museums Committee meeting being held Tuesday the 5th of December 2023. We've had apologies from councillors Roget Colton, Rumsby and Booth and Danusyverm has also sent apologies from Norfolk Contemporary Art Society. I should just note for the committee and anybody watching, there is now a vacancy on this committee. We do have one vacancy. Okay, moving on through our agenda then, can I just confirm, are there any declarations of interest anyone needs to make? No, which is 'am' as usual. We haven't had any public questions or petitions, have we? So we can move on to item four of the agenda, which is for those present approving the minutes of the meeting held on the 5th of September 2023. Is everyone who is here, councillor Kybert?
I did send my apologies in the day before the meeting and those were acknowledged.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's accurately recorded in that case. With that noted, is everybody who was present happy to confirm those minutes? Yes, thank you very much everyone, those are confirmed. So we move directly to item five on our agenda for this afternoon, the report from the period August to October 2023. So Robin, if I can hand over to you please.
Thank you Chair. So as noted, the report covers the period of August to October and as normal, I'll sort of go through the report highlighting a number of sections, obviously very happy to take any questions. At various intervals, I'll hand over to my colleagues who will be covering some of the relevant sections. So just to start on page 11 of the agenda pack, section one, just a very quick update on the fact that as a service, we continue to sort of monitor the situation with both Covid and other infections and continue to operate the sorts of site-based infrastructure that we've had in place for really since the start of the pandemic. So we're still monitoring ventilation, we still have hand sanitisation in place etcetera. Mindful of course that we're coming into the winter period and we are seeing increased incidence of various respiratory infections. Across the museum service, we continue to use our CO2 monitors to ensure that particularly back office spaces used by staff and volunteers are safe and those CO2 monitors continue to be checked by staff within spaces but also managers can monitor a dashboard to look at trends. And those CO2 monitors, as we've talked about in previous meetings, have been really helpful in terms of bringing spaces back into use and ensuring that we can maximise staff and volunteer use of some of our more challenging spaces, mindful, you know, all of our sites are historic buildings. Moving on to section two, which covers museum service operations at Norwich Castle, we're continuing to accommodate the construction works, obviously the remainder of the castle remains open and as with previous reports, we continue to use temporary entrance arrangements and we have in place our pop-up cafe and temporary shop and any members that have been to site in the last few months would have seen how busy they have been and we've actually been really pleased with the way we've been able to maintain a good offer in terms of retail and catering but also clearly to maximise income where we can. Moving on to section 2.2, just a very quick update on the ceremony offer at Norwich Castle, which we deliver in partnership of course with the Norwich Registrar's Service and you can see in the last 12 months, we've seen 733 ceremonies taking place from November through to the end of October, which has involved something like 18,500 guests. So weddings continue, weddings and other ceremonies continue to do really well and those numbers of members of this, who's been on this committee for a while will be aware, have been increasing. At this point Chair, I'd like to hand over to Jan Pittman, who's the Norwich Learning Manager, who's going to give an update on the learning section of the report.
Thank you Rob, Jan, councillors. So this report, I think today, I'll give highlights of it and please do answer any questions. It's going to be a bit about, a bit about the review that we're currently undertaking about what we're doing in the learning team and also I think referring to access. At the end of the meeting, Emma Clark, my colleague who's our Access to Learning Officer, is going to be talking about the Early Years Strategy, so we'll come to that at the end. So I'll do sort of a few brushstrokes. Slight apology, looking through this, the order of some of the things is wrong, so I will change it around to make the narrative flow a bit better. I will do better in future, I promise. First things first, in terms of review, I think I said in the last meeting that we were going to have a review of our learning offer. We've started this now with looking at our Romans and Iceni event and I think, as I said in the last meeting, we're trying to focus upon a sort of general change away from, if this makes sense, from delivering sessions to supporting children and young people to answer inquiry questions. That's what we're doing. It might be, Chair, at some point it would be, we could give another additional talk about our approach to learning, but in again broad brushstrokes at the moment. So we've changed around the focus of this day. I think it's fair to say that the previous focus was quite oppositional, basically placing the Romans and the Iceni in opposition to each other and we felt that this isn't really an appropriate way to be dealing things with current situation in, well, the rest of the world etcetera. And so we've now moved it on to something where we're asking children to consider what an individual person who's caught within the events of the Boudicane uprising should do, to make a choice about whether they should go to the Romans, go to the Iceni or hope that they can live in peace together. And we've had a few pilots and as you can see from the feedback here, I mean it was perfect. Sometimes you get feedback which is exactly the feedback that you want to get and that's why we've put it here, because it was exactly the feedback that we wanted to get. Looking at the objects and discussing them really got the children thinking and talking the way I want them to when discussing historical objects, inquiry based, as this is how we organise our lessons in school. So it's really positive beginning. The review process will now continue and in turn we'll be coming to each of the sessions that we do with schools, you know, and reviewing them and changing them around, but a very positive, positive start to that. Sort of moving into the idea of sort of access, one of the reasons that we are doing this review of our schools programme is to ensure that every child, every young person who comes has access to learning. And so moving on to, I mean as you can see, early years and access, moving on to quiet hour, this is something which is part of the Keep Activity Plan as an initiative that we're bringing, I'm just raising your awareness of it here, very important element of our offer to be able to be accessible to a range of different visitors. In this one, on 20th of August, welcomed 11 visitors including three with children with SEND. One of the critical parts of it, I'd just like to draw your attention to, is the fact that all of them said that they hadn't brought their children to the museum before. So obviously, you know, we appreciate that there are a number of barriers to visitors, being able to offer quiet hours, really critical way of allowing some people to visit, otherwise wouldn't be able to. Early Years and Family Saturdays, this is the thing I think mentioned in the last meeting about, again, an initiative to try to make best use of staff resource, also to develop a marketable event for families and early years families, but also it's been a very good way of allowing us to test out new ways of working and engaging with general public and other groups. This has now been running since September and they've been very positive. I think our next job is to begin to market and build up numbers to them, but responses have been very positive and increasing numbers of people have been visiting. As I said, basically it's a chance for us to do a theme day, the second Saturday of every month is an early years one and the fourth one is a family one. We can do a theme day where we can try out new things. I won't say too much about it because Emma is going to be alluding to it when she talks about the early years strategy, which neatly brings us on to the next bit, which is about the early years strategy. So I won't say too, I won't say any more about that because we'll consider that at the end, but this is something that Emma and I have been working on in recent months and I think, well I hope after our presentation later on, you'll see how, I think that concerted piece of work is now really having benefits in terms of both the Keep Activity Plan but also aspirations for the Norwich Museums and indeed the service in general. If you'll excuse me, I'm just going to miss the next two about the Events and Visitor Programme and family learning and just move on to MAP Young Parents and BSL Tours because those just fit into this idea of trying to promote access, which as I said is one of our key driving forces at the moment. Getting young parents on MAP is a relationship which Rosalind Hewitt and Emma have been working on and that's just one example, again, of a very positive outcome to making sure that people who otherwise wouldn't be visiting are able to visit. In the same vein, BSL Tours worked with a really very talented young person, Daniel Gillings, who's, I mean, just very impressive. So a young man had worked with us on the Kick the Dust project, which Robyn will be reporting about later, and he worked with Martin Glover, who we'd worked with on BSL Tours to give a BSL tour of the Gloucester and it's just a tour de force, I think we can say, it was really very impressive. Really good outcomes for Kick the Dust actually, because it shows the way that we can follow people and allow them to progress and give them opportunities they wouldn't otherwise have. But also a really good outcome for us because obviously having, being able to be accessible to as many different communities as possible, very important. We're going to take what we've learnt from this and other tours, Strangers, and take it on to the Keep when the Keep opens. Moving on to the Keep, the Keep Activity Plan continues to go apace. I think I'd like to highlight the Knights of the Sand Table, which is the second item there, which is a Kick the Dust and Keep Activity Plan crossover, where Jacqueline Begoyne, one of our learning assistants, has been working with a brilliant group of young people to create a soundscape inspired by three of the key objects that are going to go in the British Museum Medieval Gallery and the new Keep Development. So they've been, it's been a very interesting process. I've been sort of slightly tangential to it, but from the links that I've had, it's been a fantastic opportunity for young people to consider a whole lot of different ways of approaching interpreting the past. And I think, I think from what I have heard and speaking to them, they've grasped it very much by the horns and I think it's going to be a very interesting outcome. The process is of course probably more important than the outcome, except in this place, the outcome will have some QR codes on some of the displays, so when people go into the British Museum Gallery, they'll be able to listen to a minute, minutes and a half of their response to the objects. Goodness knows what they're actually going to do, but I'm sure it's going to be very exciting. Moving on to Summer Programme, and this is where, again apologies, I'm just going to move slightly back here to the Events and Visitor, to Shipwrecked. On the 11th of August, one of those very interesting and fortuitous conversations, we realised that there are spaces in the Castle Mall which were being used as part of their holiday. So Rosalind Hewitt, our Learning Engagement Officer, spoke to Castle Mall for us to do some outreach work. Basically, it's easy for us, we took part of the summer holiday activity, moved it out to the Castle Mall and then able to engage with people as they move through and we did a little bit of also just offering a few families free tickets by a lucky dip to get people to coming in. And as you can see, and the majority of the 130 people that we engaged with haven't been to the museum before, so it's a nice way of us just extending our reach a little bit out into Norwich. As far as the general offer for visitors is concerned, the Summer Programme, of course that seems long in the distance, passed with a very effective partnership, I think, with RNLI, obviously with the Gloucester being the theme for our summer holidays activities. It was an obvious partnership working with the RNLI and the RNLI have having problems, the people on the coast, which is where their main presence is, they were saying that many of those understand the risks of, dangers of the sea, so they wanted to extend into the city. And again, because of the nature of our exhibition, we worked with them, they brought some of their kid, some of their brilliant volunteers, and worked very effectively with them. I think it's one of those partnerships that obviously, we're not going to be doing things about sea or drowning ships very often, but it's one of those things that we'll continue, I think, to bear in mind because it was a very successful partnership. I think that's probably the end of the report at the moment, Robyn, so if I pass back to you, but then pass back to me in a moment.
Thank you very much, Jan. Are there any questions or comments people have? Councillor Kidman first.
Thank you for that report, it's brilliant and so much of it is music to my ears. I believe that my question on the bottom of page six was my original question about the breaking down of barriers and reviewing who isn't engaging with the museum, so that and there's so much of that in here. And the question I was going to ask, having read your report, is related to the Shipwrecked in the Castle Port, I think it's an excellent idea, I think it's, I'm a great advocate, if you can't get people through the doors, then you take it out to them. I know that data is collected around, with similar projects such as monitoring when free tickets have been issued and used to visit the museum. Was something like that used in this part of the programme? Is there anything else pertaining to this programme that has had legacy, if you like, in terms of the young people visiting the museum services?
So that's, I think that's what we can call, that's something that we're working on, so that's an in-progress, I think it's best to say. So as a part of the Early Years and the Family Saturdays, we are giving out, and I think as I mentioned in the last, we're giving out a certain number of free tickets. One of the things that Emma's going to be mentioning in her early years report is about that. What we need to do is to, we need to look at the numbers that are coming back. It's been interesting looking at the numbers coming back and as Emma will mention when she talks about Earlham Nursery, it makes us, I think, appreciate some of the barriers to entry, very real barriers to entry. And one of our jobs in the coming months, as we do more of these, particularly the Early Years Saturdays and the earlier, is finding ways where we can engage with, it largely be formal settings, to try to make sure, giving free ticket, free family tickets is not the only barrier by far. And that, I think, so a very good point, thank you, and one of those ones which is very high on our list of concerns. I think it's, we found, there's been variable return of tickets for, we need to really work with settings to find out what those barriers are. As I said, Emma will be talking about one of the possible solutions to that in her report.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Kybert?
Thank you, Jan. Interested to read the Romans and Iceni project. Does that include reference to the Gallows Hill site in Thetford, which was a major...
Sorry. This absolutely, now in, I'm afraid to say in this occasion it doesn't and the reason for that is that we are linking it to a particular point in the uprising and so we talk a bit about, we're trying to, and the reason for that is largely because what we're trying to do is to get exploration of the galleries. And so in the galleries and the way it works, so what we used to do is there was a tiny little bit of the day which was going into the Romans and Iceni gallery, now we're spending a whole session effectively in there. But what it really means is, so maybe I'll make a caveat to that, councillor Kybert, that if it is raised as a result of being in the gallery, then we will talk to it, to talk about it and we will talk about the significance of Iceni, but it's very much asking young people to explore and then we respond to what they find of interest. So yes, it could come up, but it's not something that's built in as such, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Robin, if I can hand back to you for section four please. Oh, apologies, councillor Smear.
Yeah, thank you very much. Another question about the Romans and Iceni and you mentioned how you didn't want it to sort of appear confrontational and sort of adversarial and I understand that and obviously the Iceni Rebellion under BDC or Boudica, however you want to pronounce her name, was a massive failure in terms of occupation, but the fact that the results were very confrontational and slaughter of the Roman population in Colchester or Camilla Dunham and then obviously the destruction of her army in St Albans and her subsequent suicide or death, this was a brutal time. I mean, we saw what happened with Vercingetorix after Elysia, this was a time where sort of rebellions were crushed and this was adversarial. So I'm just wanting to basically have that reassurance that the sort of historical fact of that isn't being sort of diluted down.
No, no, it's not, so what we're doing is we are actually placing it right at the start of the rebellion and we're taking, the main character is a character we've called Essico, very few Iceni names, that's just one that happens to be on a coin, so we know that that is an Iceni name. And we're focusing on the Crown Thorpe Hord. Now for those councillors who don't know, the Crown Thorpe Hord is a unique survival of a Roman wine set basically, but with Celtic elements on two of the Roman wine cups. So they're beautiful little swimming ducks, so it's this composite between, let's call it, British and Roman influences. So we're presenting the main protagonist as a Romanised Iceni who is caught in the middle and has to make a decision of, do they go to the Romans? Foreshadowing, we're saying the Romans in Camilla Dunham, because we don't know what's going to happen to the Romans in Camilla Dunham, let's present it's all going to be all right if they go to Camilla Dunham. Or go back to the Iceni or as I said, decide to, that everything will be well. Because we're taking it before the events of the, then we will leave it to schools and we will provide obviously additional resources, but we'll leave it to schools to talk about the rest of it. At the end of it, all they find out is that Essico has buried the objects and then they leave and nobody knows what happens, except that 2000 years ago, a metal detector detecting a Crown Thorpe comes upon a hoard with these things, but they don't know what happens to Essico. So we're, I suppose in answer to your question, we're neatly sidestepping that bit and we'll let the schools deal with that in the way they could. With increasing numbers of, I mean, you know, of children and young people who have suffered trauma in schools, we felt it was time to not be quite so combative in the way that we treat the issues.
Councillor Watkins?
Thank you very much indeed Chair. Following on from what other speakers have said, I too have read the report with great interest and listened to your presentation, certainly very heartening, you know, the range of activities and events that you've got to, that run offer to try and engage young people in the ways that you're trying to break down barriers to access. I wonder if I could just ask, I mean, I remember when I was very young, so a very long time ago now, over 50 years ago, I was an attendee at the Museums Club, which was run at that time in the 1960s and probably into the 1970s and I just wondered out of interest whether that's still going strong and what kind, if it is, you know, what kind of participation levels you get.
So we, Museum Club as it was for many years, run, no longer runs councillor Watkins, we do have various alternatives and this was, to be honest, one of the reasons to do these Family Saturdays and Early Years Saturdays, a way that we could allow a greater, you know, a greater input on those two Saturdays of every month. So in a way that replaces part of it. The other part of it is we do have an initiative called Start Club, which is a Saturday art club, which has been running before and during pandemic, which is an opportunity for young people. That's focused most about 8 to 11 year olds in order to engage with an art practitioner and museum collections and settings as a part of that. So that's at the moment a monthly club, though we are considering changing the format of that to focus it on a slightly different way.
Okay, thank you very much everyone. If there are no more questions or comments, I'll hand over to Robin for part four of the report.
Thank you Chair. So page 18 of the pack, as normal with these committees, just giving an update on the Kick the Dust programme across the county. So as members, I'm sure are very aware, Kick the Dust is our programme for working with young people aged 11 to 25, but with a particular focus on young people aged 16 to 25 and principally involving young people who wouldn't perhaps normally see museums or heritage as being, dare I say, remotely relevant to their lives. So working with partners such as YMCA, Norfolk and also Children's Services and specialist teams within Norfolk County Council. So at the beginning of the report, in terms of the background, just reminding members about the first iteration of the Kick the Dust programme, which was funded through the National Artly Heritage Fund and which ran from 2018 through to the end of March 2023. And that's a project that we've obviously been reporting on regularly to this committee and as a reminder, we've just put into this section the participation numbers that we saw during that first phase of Kick the Dust. So on page 19, you can see that from the start of that project in October 2018 to its finish in March 23, we worked with over 4,500 individual young people, involving nearly 14,000 interventions and something like 7,000 hours of quality activity, so really impactful programme. And by the end of the first iteration of Kick the Dust, 86% of all activities were being led and designed by young people. So really important programme. And as we've discussed in previous committees, Kick the Dust is no longer a project, it's just a way that we work within Norfolk Museum Service. So the second section of the report under Current Activity really looks at how Kick the Dust has moved into a new iteration. So the key part of that new iteration is based around our additional funding from Arts Council England, which is linked to our national portfolio organisation funding, which runs for two years from 2023 to 2026. We actually secured additional funding from the Arts Council specifically to support our Kick the Dust activity. And whilst that funding has a particular focus around Arts Council priority places in Great Yarmouth, Kings Lynn and Thetford, we are, as you have seen from the report that Jan presented, continuing to maintain our Kick the Dust activities and teams here in Norwich. In addition to the Arts Council England funding to support Kick the Dust, we're also getting funding from the County Council's Public Health, which is particularly focused on the work we're doing around young people's mental health and wellbeing. As part of our new programme of work through the Arts Council, we are now working much more closely in partnership with the Norfolk Library Service and using library sites as bases for new activity, in addition to the existing programmes running through our museums. And you can see in the report that the key aims of the new Arts Council programme really build on what we've been doing since the start of Kick the Dust, which is around supporting young people to develop transferable word-based skills, helping them develop digital skills, which also benefits the cultural sector and also enabling them to engage and appreciate their local history and culture. And as with our previous Kick the Dust activity, our current work is all around offering young people not just one-off interactions, but progression opportunities where they can develop a long-term relationship with us, in some cases covering a number of years, moving through the programmes, getting more actively involved in developing and shaping what we do, until ultimately we've got young people, as we have now, very much steering the project overall through being part of our steering group and acting as champions for the programme. What we've shown on page 20 is the updated data relating to the new iteration of Kick the Dust going back to May of 2023. So we're still in fairly early days and numbers are building and we'll expect to see those numbers obviously climbing as the project develops over the next three years. But you can see at the bottom of page 20 that since the start of the new phase of Kick the Dust activity, much of which has involved developing new groups of young people in different places, so it's been a bit of a slow burn. We've seen some... We've seen something like 960 interventions involving 379 individual young people. Most of those activities are happening face to face, but we are also providing online options for some young people who actually still prefer to engage in that way. In terms of developing a longer term relationship with young people, we're also providing free admission passes to all young people participating in the Kick the Dust programme, which they can use at any museum site around the county. And we've been tracking the use of those cards and that is showing that young people are coming into our sites, not just at a time when they're attending an activity, but also at other times and indeed visiting sites that aren't directly involved with their specific project work. Something that, again, we've talked about at previous meetings of this committee is the work that Kick the Dust has done around supporting young people's mental health and wellbeing. Members may recall that in the first iteration of Kick the Dust, we were seeing about 26% of young people that we were involved with reporting mental health issues. That figure has risen, albeit with a small sample size, to 44%. And as part of the new Kick the Dust work, what we are very much focusing on is capturing data to measure the impact of our work on young people's mental health. We're now undertaking evaluation using the Warwick Edinburgh Scale of Mental Health, which enables us to basically demonstrate to public health colleagues, to NHS and others, a measurable impact of the work that we do. And as the programmes build over the next few years, obviously that dataset will grow. And you can see some of the early data being reported under that new evaluation on page 23, where you can see how people involved in the programme were feeling about their mental health before they worked with us and after. So capturing this impact data is obviously really important in terms of us understanding the impact of what we're doing, but it's also really critical when we're having conversations with external partners and stakeholders and potential funders around the impact that our work has. So we'll keep reporting on those figures to future meetings of this committee. As previously, we've also included in the report, starting on page 24, some quotes from the young people involved in our activities and we note from these meetings that members do appreciate seeing that. So we'll continue to provide that information. And then the final thing to update you on in terms of Kick the Dust is progress on our new funding application to the National Artly Heritage Fund for the project called Your Heritage, Your Future. Members may be aware that we secured first stage funding from the National Artly Heritage Fund at the start of the year and we're now working on the development phase of that project prior to a full application being submitted at the end of May of 24. And if that full application is successful, we'd expect project delivery to start in the autumn of next year, 24, and then extend for a further four years. So really important project in terms of the sort of long-term sustainability of the Kick the Dust programmes, but it's also about building on our work to date. That project sees Norfolk Museum Service working in partnership with YMCA Leicestershire, who were also recipients of Heritage Fund Kick the Dust funding previously. We've developed a really good working relationship with them and we'll be working with them to share learning around our work with young people to museums and heritage sites across the east of England and the East Midlands as part of that project, but also, of course, continuing to focus a lot of our energies here in Norfolk. So we'll continue to report to members on the development of that funding application, which, as I say, we hope to submit at the end of May. There's a lot of work going on at the moment, developing the detail of that application. And we also have a number of pilot activities running, including pilot training sessions for the wider museum sector. We're still maintaining our close working relationship with YMCA Norfolk, who've been a key partner for us throughout our Kick the Dust activities and also continuing to maintain close partnership working with all the organisations that we've developed a relationship with over the last five years. So really interesting to see that project sort of maturing, but as I say, it's not so much a project, it's just a way that we now work. Thank you, Chair. I'll just pause for any questions on that.
Thank you very much, Robin, for that. And yes, certainly there's a substantial legacy from Kick the Dust. So we certainly wish you well with the round two bids and seeing this going forward. Other questions, Chancellor Kidman?
Thank you, Chair. I'm a great fan of the Kick the Dust programme and every time I've had an update data, I've been so impressed. It's an amazing project and wish the team who are sustaining it lots of luck in the next stage. I'm also always really interested in the data of the participants. And it's on page 22, there's the target audiences. And I understand, you know, these are intersectional, but just looking at the care levers being 0% and I imagine that some of the YMCA clients may also be care levers. I don't know, but I'm just kind of interested in that area in particular, well, not in particular, but if you could give any insight into why the care lever is, you know, at the moment at 0% and whether any of those are actually in some of the other sections. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And as, again, members who've been on this committee for a while will know that when we've reported on the sort of analysis of participants, a number of those participants do cross over multiple headings. Obviously, at the moment, we're still dealing with a relatively small sample size in terms of new Kick the Dust happening since May, so the sample size is not what it was in the latter stages of reporting against the previous Kick the Dust programmes. And I would expect that figure to increase because certainly we continue to work really closely with YMCA. You can see that something like 9% of our participants are YMCA clients. At the moment, that's a symptom of the way the project is developing. With our previous Kick the Dust activity, we were looking at something more like 36% of participants being YMCA clients. So I think that percentage will increase and that will probably be one of the things that influences that care lever percentage. So it's never been a big, it's never been a big number. I mean, this isn't a numbers game clearly, but it is nevertheless something that we have been sort of aware of. And as you said, Chancellor, with YMCA clients, there is certainly a significant proportion that would fall into that category. So I would expect as the level of engagement from YMCA clients increases, we'll see that figure also increasing. Just to say, in terms of YMCA activity at the moment, our focus is with a YMCA group principally in Great Yarmouth and we are looking to sort of build again more activity here in Norwich going forward. So yeah, it's really interesting to sort of track the data and it's all about, I think, demonstrating the fact that Kick the Dust programmes, you know, work with some of the most challenged young people who are facing, going back to what Jan was saying, you know, significant barriers, you know, just to get out the door, frankly. So it's always really interesting to sort of monitor the data. And one of the real strengths of our Kick the Dust work has been actually the quality of the data in terms of understanding who we're engaging with, but also where we need to do more and where we need to focus. So if for any reason we don't see that figure changing, we'll know that we need to do some targeted work, which we have done in the past with particular groups. Thank you.
Chancellor Watkins.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, the summary on page 24 talks about Kick the Dust moving into a new phase, which we've obviously heard about already, and talks about the three-stage journey involved in helping young people to develop transferable work-related skills to support them to go into employment and into further learning opportunities. I just wondered whether you have any sort of figures, any information as to how successful we have been in helping to secure employment and further opportunities for those people since Kick the Dust started. Thank you.
Thank you. And within the confines of GDPR, we do track our young people and we could certainly come back to a future meeting with a bit of an update on the stories around some of our young people and the sort of data that underpins that. But we have Kick the Dust young people who now work for Norfolk Museum Service. We know of a number of, you know, really successful stories for young people who, you know, were in a quite difficult place when they started out on the programme. So we can certainly come back to a future meeting, Chair, with a bit more data. And I could perhaps ask the Kick the Dust coordinator, Christine Marsden, to join us to give a presentation on that because it's a real success story.
Yes, thank you very much. I mean, we've heard some great details of all this project has done in the past, so it would be interesting if we could be updated on that. Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, Robin, if I could then hand to you for section five of the report, an update on the Castle Keep project.
Thank you, Chair. So as normal, I'll give members a verbal update of where we are. I have included a significant photograph in the report pack this time on the bottom page 26, which shows the glass roofing sections being craned into place in the new entrance atrium, which was a fairly terrifying process to watch, frankly, but all secured very successfully. But that's a real milestone and in terms of the report that you've been provided with here, we have sort of seen some significant milestones passed recently. That includes within the Percival section, which is the entrance area, the new shop, café and school space. The completion of the atrium glazing obviously then creates weather tightness, which means that all the other trades can progress. So we've seen works moving on at a real pace within the entrance area. So not only has the glass roof now be installed, and just a reminder for members who've had the opportunity to be on site and those who haven't, that glass roof will give our visitors wonderful panoramic views up the east face of the Keep, a view that has been obscured since the 1960s. And it means immediately on arrival, visitors will get that wow moment of seeing above them through the glass, the elevation of the By God Tower and the Keep itself. So a real dramatic arrival at the castle for our visitors, which will also very much put the castle in the centre of the visit. So visually very striking, but also really important in terms of how visitors orientate themselves when they arrive at the site. So with the completion of the glazing panels, that's meant that a lot of other stuff has been able to move on very quickly. I'm going up onto site, I think, on Thursday and I'll be able to walk, I know, on the new tiled floors across the entrance atrium. We've now seen the first phase of the retail shop fit-out completed. We've also recently seen the installation of the restored City of Norwich mosaic crest, which has now gone back into the entrance area from where it came, having been very lovingly restored and it looks fantastic. We've also seen the new lift installed in the Percival wing that will provide visitors with the means of accessing the new glaze bridge, which will facilitate level access into the principal floor level of the Keep. So some really significant steps forward in the Percival section. The contractors are working at a real pace in there and every time I go up there, it's there's noticeable progress, which is really pleasing. In the Keep itself, again, we've passed a significant milestone with the, pretty much now the completion of the structural steelwork for the new roof platforms, which will provide the viewing platforms that will enable visitors to sort of get those wonderful views across the city. And that includes the installation of the lift shaft, which will mean that whatever people's ability, they'll be able to access that that battlement level. So the installation of those rooftop structural steels and the installation of the lift shaft, which perforates through the roof, was again a really significant milestone. So what we're now seeing in the Keep itself is some of the sort of partitioning work being done and also they're beginning to put down the oak flooring on the principal floor level. In the British Museum Gallery, which obviously sits within the Keep, the gallery floors are all in, the cases are currently in manufacture and all the different interpretation packages are well advanced. And we are continuing to work really closely with the British Museum and their curators, collection management, conservators, learning teams, PR and comms teams are all really closely involved in what we're doing. I should also add that we have now appointed a specialist PR and communication company to work with us in terms of developing the launch and overseeing the first phase of the reopening of the Keep next year, a company called Cultural Communications Collective, CCC, who were involved in the PR around the opening of the Museum of Making in Derby, which some members may be aware was shortlisted for the Museum of the Year award and has probably been one of the most significant museum openings of recent years. So they come with a good track record and we're looking forward to working with them. They've already been to site and working with our own comms and PR colleagues to make sure that we've got a really strong campaign in place in both the run-up to the opening of the Keep and then maximising opportunities in the first few months. So lots of work going on and yeah, we're continuing to sort of pass those significant milestones. The remaining milestone to navigate is the installation of the glazed bridge, which will connect the Percival wing through to the Keep itself. Detailed planning work for that is pretty much now concluded. So yeah, so and we are continuing to facilitate when we can tours of the construction site and whilst we're trying to not get in the way of the building contractors at the moment too much because they're working at such a pace, we'll be certainly looking at opportunities to invite members of this committee back to a construction site visit as early as possible, Chair.
Thank you.
Happy to pause there for any questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Certainly, I think I speak for members of the committee, we really appreciated the opportunity of seeing the works as they've been progressing. Are there any comments or questions from anybody at this stage? No, in which case, Robin, if I could hand back to you for section six of the report, other activity across.
Thank you, Chair. And turning in section six to Museum of Norwich and in common with Strangers Hall, as members are aware, despite the sort of modest size of the staff teams, the ambition of the of those sites is always very impressive. So I've only given you a sort of brief snapshot of the broad range of activities being delivered by really creative teams at both Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall. And in terms of the Museum of Norwich, the first thing I was going to draw your attention to was actually top of page 28, in terms of not only did the site team there support a really broad range of public-facing events and activities, including working with some really sort of diverse groups and partnerships. They also do the sort of slightly more mundane curatorial stuff occasionally and the deep clean, I thought I would highlight because it's the sort of thing that often doesn't get highlighted, but it's a reminder that the staff team there, as well as doing lots of outward-facing stuff, also are very assiduous in terms of caring for the collections. also are very assiduous in terms of caring for the collections and working with our in-house conservation team to make sure that the collections stay in really good shape and that the displays again remain really good quality. So what they've done this year at Museum of Norwich is to have a phased approach, which is very sensible. So they they've focused their initial attention on open displays and things like the Calais chocolate case. So working with our conservation team and often involving volunteers, as you can see in the report, in this case, volunteers from a number of the organisations they regularly work with at the Museum of Norwich, including English Plus and Women at Work. You know, really important behind the scenes work, just ensuring that our collections remain in really good order and that the displays continue looking really fresh. I was going to hand over now to Jan Pittman to just pick out any highlights from the learning section of the Museum of Norwich report.
Thank you, Robin. I really just, I mean, I was also going to highlight the deep clean as well. I'm sure in the next report, that may be something that we want to say a little bit more about because then the strangers' deep clean will have happened. I think it's a really important example of how we've used something which is a an annual activity, an important part of the conservation of the buildings, but to engage with groups that we otherwise wouldn't be engaging with. In this case, as working with Women at Work and also English Plus. So we'll expand a bit more about that and maybe in a future meeting, but I did. The other thing I wanted to highlight was just the Community Culture Club. So that's on, I think it'll be on page twenty nine. And it might be that this is something that we could have as a subject for a future meeting at the end because I think it's a significant piece of work. It's working. It's been running for a number of years as part of the Keep Activity Plan. And it's a very good example of how the work of the Keep Activity Plan has been reviewed and has developed and has now become part of our general practice, which is part of the point of the Keep Activity Plan, to test things out and where a thing works to build on it. And in in this case, so it's a programme, I said, this is the third year that it's been run. It's designed for older adults living with dementia, carers, people with long-term health conditions. I won't go into details about it, apart from just to say that we're very pleased to receive a reasonably sized grant as part of UEA's niche research project. Niche stands for Norfolk Initiative for Coastal Rural Health Equities. So we put in a bid, a funding bid with UEA and received a reasonable amount to be able to continue activities for the Community Culture Club for the next three years. The great thing about the the niche funding is that one of the focuses of it is to embed evaluation. So in addition to Rosent Huidt, who's our learning engagement officer, and Susie Churner, who's a a learning officer, we've also got money to pay Holly Sanford, who's going to be an embedded evaluator. The idea is that over the course of three years, we can actually so when I say embedded evaluator, I mean, she is involved in the activities, but she's also primarily focusing upon evaluating the impact upon the participants. And the idea is that in the course of three years, by the end of it, we will have enough data to be able to show the impact of, well, I think it's a really important piece of work. It's part of a general really focus of of the funding to try to ensure that these activities, which everybody knows are good activities, can be effectively evaluated so we can actually get some some data sets to make the case for the impact of art upon wellbeing, art and heritage for wellbeing.
And thank you very much, Jan. That sounds really interesting. We could certainly consider the Community Culture Club as something that comes to a future committee. Thank you. Robin, if I could hand to you.
Thank you, Chair. And again, in terms of diversity of the offer at Museum of Norwich, I think page thirty sort of captures it very well, where you have the the Royal College of General Practitioners Welcome to Norwich event back in September for GP trainees, which obviously does tie in really nicely to the fantastic pharmacy collections at the Museum of Norwich. But also the opportunity to use the building as a really sort of really attractive venue. It's a really informal setting and the courtyard is a wonderful asset for those sorts of activities. So. And then below it, you've got the Garages Creative Wellbeing Group, which happened back in October. And that again is part of a longstanding relationship with a local organisation, working with a group who have sort of mental health challenges. And then again, using the collections of the Museum of Norwich, in this case, the chocolate collections, to inspire some activities, but also in the context of a of a setting that's quite informal. So I think one of the reasons we tend to focus a lot of our community engagement work at Museum of Norwich, a bit like some of our Kick the Dust activity, is that it's not a very intimidating venue compared to some of a site like perhaps Norwich Castle. It's it's a very welcoming setting and people seem to sort of feel very comfortable coming into the Museum of Norwich. Particularly, you know, people who who might perhaps otherwise struggle in coming into a formal setting. So it's it's a really, it's a real asset for the city, I think. The Museum of Norwich and the team there do excellent work, obviously working with colleagues from across the service to make the most of that asset. In much the same way, segueing gently into Strangers Hall, as do colleagues at Strangers. And again, in terms of the report you have in front of you, you're only getting sort of a sort of a brief selection of the range of creative activities that the team at Strangers Hall generate. Again, often working partnership with other NMS colleagues and other organisations. As we've reported to this committee previously, twenty twenty-three is a very significant anniversary for Strangers Hall. And we've been really strongly supported by the Friends of Norwich Museums and the Freeman to enable not only some physical alterations to be made to the building in terms of the displays, but also supporting a range of public events, including a free admission week during the summer linked to the centenary, which saw really good numbers of people coming into the Museum of Norwich, sorry, into the into Strangers Hall. And also in common with other NMS sites, Strangers also supported Heritage Open Days. And again, saw really good numbers of people engaging on that day. And there's a nice picture of Bethan dressed up for some of the Heritage Open Day activities on the bottom of page thirty-one. Cathy Terry, the very busy curator at Strangers Hall, also has worked with colleagues at the Norfolk Record Office to develop programmes of activities. And there's been reciprocal talks at both the Archive Centre and Strangers Hall, again, linking into the centenary and the shared collections that sort of talk about the really interesting history of Strangers Hall. In terms of the diversity of of activities that are happening, again, you get a flavour of that in the report, including a visit from the Norwich Photographic Institute Society, where members were clearly inspired by the settings and took lots and lots of photographs. And we've just been able to show one of those in the report. And a reminder in terms of the centenary in regard to the the sort of physical improvements to the site, something we've reported on before, but again, supported by the Freeman and the Friends. The front windows of Strangers Hall have been transformed and unified, featuring, you know, characters from the history of the of the museum and featuring a number of works produced by community groups, including Kick the Dust young people. And one of the real challenges at Strangers Hall is that street frontage. And I think if you stood outside Strangers Hall and seen the new artworks, it really does help unify what can otherwise be a very disjointed frontage. Because it's all about trying to encourage visitors to come in at once they've made it through the door, obviously, they then enter this wonderful interior with that fantastic garden. And then speaking of the garden, so much of Strangers Hall is not only underpinned by the staff team there, but also by the dedicated team of volunteers. And the garden volunteers have been key to making sure that the gardens remain really attractive. And they've been battling infestations of box moth caterpillar attacking the box hedges. So I think that's an ongoing campaign of attrition, but the garden's looking really good. And again, without the volunteers, you know, the visitor experience would not be as it is. And we've also put in some information about, as always, the work that goes on looking after the building. It's a fantastic building. It's a challenging historic building to maintain. And the staff team work really closely with colleagues from the city council to make sure that all the challenges of caring for a building of that age in the centre of the city are dealt with promptly. As I say, we have a really good working relationship with colleagues in the city council. And as Jan mentioned, as we go into January, we'll be seeing another annual deep clean at Strangers Hall, which is a real team effort involving staff from across NMS, along with lots of volunteers, to ensure that the collections there remain in really good condition. Strangers has also benefited from lots of really good publicity and social media over the over the last few months. And members may have spotted back in September, there was quite a big piece on the BBC News around collecting material relating to the Covid pandemic, picturing the pandemic. And that featured the work that the Strangers Hall team had done, collecting locally relevant material as part of that contemporary collecting story of an extraordinary time within our memories. So as I say, just a flavour of the activity happening at both Strangers and Museum of Norwich and real testimony to the endeavours of the of the staff teams there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Robin, for that. I just wanted to say I was very interested to see the After Dark tour that's proposed and also rather relieved to see that the Candlelight Tour has LED candles. councillor councillor Ward.
Yes, thank you. Just in terms of publicity, we don't seem to be doing a lot in our libraries to publicise the museums. We've got a huge library here with a massive footfall. And apart from a few leaflets, there's not a lot in there about the museums. If we could have a sort of permanent stand in there and and in all our forty-seven libraries, in fact, to tell about all the wonderful work we do in the museum service and what's available, I'm sure that would be a big help.
That's a really good, really good thought. Thank you, councillor Ward. And we are seeing more joint social media activity now happening with libraries, particularly off of the back of our partnership work around Kick the Dust. But I I think you're absolutely right that, you know, the libraries do offer a really good opportunity to get into lots of communities across the county and promote what we're doing. So I'll certainly pick that up with the marketing manager.
Yes, thank you very much. That's a very good suggestion indeed. Thank you. If there are no further comments or questions, if we move to section seven of the report, if I could hand over to Francesca.
Thank you. Well, the Norwich Castle curators continue to work on a wide variety of projects, as you'll see from the report. Georgia, Georgia Botinelli, having fairly recently put on display her watercolour print drawings, a watercolour exhibition where land and water meet, has been doing some further research on one of the artists represented, Catherine Moore Nichols, Norwich-born artist, who is a particularly wonderful printmaker, etch-a-skull printmaker, but not all that well known. So her next exhibition for the Watercolour Gallery next year will be a one-woman show of Catherine's work, which is quite a new thing. I don't think we've ever had a Watercolour Gallery show entirely devoted to a work of a woman artist before. And Catherine Nichols' work deserves to be much better known. In fact, Georgia is aiming to build on that research on Catherine Nichols to do a larger exhibition around women artists and collectors around Norfolk and East Anglia in the in the future. But the work by Catherine Nichols is a start on this longer term project. Rosie Gray, she's extremely busy at the moment. As you all have seen, she fairly recently mounted a new film in in the Timothy Gurney Gallery, a commission from artist Amarty Golding called Britannia. I hope you'll have all seen that by now. And she's also working on several other exhibitions, working in collaboration with Amanda Geitner, who's over here, on a major new exhibition for the tea galleries next year, exploring the work of the artist Roger Ackling, which would be entitled Sunlight. This will be accompanied by an extensive catalogue, which Amanda and Rosie are working on at the moment. She's also working, once Amarty Golding's film Britannia has come down early next year, there will be an exhibition in the Timothy Gurney Gallery of relatively new acquisitions, including some by some extremely important newly acquired contemporary artists. So we'll look forward to sharing those with you. And in the smaller Coleman project space, there'll be a new exhibition early next year by the artists Daniel and Clara, the artist group Daniel and Clara, who are responding to Norwich School works, in particularly the work of John Crowe doing contemporary landscape. And further on in time, she will be putting on a show on Colin Self, the Norwich artist. Colin Self, a major retrospective, but we'll be able to tell you more about that in further reports. Otherwise, Kate Thaxton, the curator of the Norfolk Regimental Museum, has been working on the Norfolk Regimental Museum New Views website, which has been launched recently. And she's been, Kate has been working with a view to encourage more younger people to visit the regimental collections and learn more about the Reggie collections. And so six tutors from Norwich University of the Arts have visited with a view to incorporating rural Norfolk regiment material and visits to the Shire Hall into their future studies. And she has also, Kate has obviously during lockdown, no touchscreens permitted, but they have now been reinstalled in the regimental displays on the rotunda balcony in the castle. And this will, this includes an interactive display enabling visitors to explore various elements of life within the Norfolk Regiment over the years under different headings. And Kate has written and designed that herself, aided by one of the volunteers. And Kate's programme of collections management also continues. She's been repacking a great many volumes, seventy volumes of archives, including photographs, medals and uniforms in higher quality storage and especially designed storage boxes to protect them more efficiently. And in addition, she continues working on a high range of inquiries. Continuing the collections management team, Ruth Battersby, the curator of Costume and Textiles, has just completed the mammoth task of clearing all objects from her large stall in Shire Hall. The former courtroom that was used as the regimental museum up until a decade ago, but has since been a costume and textile store. You'll see the scale of the task from the photographs that Ruth has included. There has been, there is an ongoing programme of building work in that area of the Shire Hall to remove and replace sections of plaster which has been damaged by damp. And so she's had to move over several months all the collections. And as you'll see, thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty-seven objects have been moved to Abbot Gresson Hall and three thousand two hundred and sixty-eight have been moved internally to other stores. And these range from world textiles, including patchwork quilts, tapestries and banners, the whole shoe collection, costume collections, including children's wear, sporting, occupational, civic ceremonial and ecclesiastical wear, textile tools, the contents of plan chest drawers, including seventeenth and eighteenth century embroideries, parasols, umbrellas, walking sticks and many other items. A huge, huge task and one which is kept. A huge, huge task and one which has kept Ruth very occupied, but has been done with extreme efficiency by a combination of technicians and local removal company, staff and collections management and conservation teams, together with some trainees and volunteers. And Ruth is to be congratulated on the efficiency of this massive undertaking. Somebody here, I don't think they're here now, had asked for further updates from Ruth as of the last meeting. But this is, this is the main body of what she has been doing of late. But Ruth is very happy to come and do another, to do a presentation in person at a future point if needed. And if there is, if people are interested, she's very happy to do that. In the interim, otherwise, I'm, I've just opened an exhibition at Time and Tide Museum called Crossings, Constructions and Connections. The exhibition based around the Turner painting Walton Bridges. This was designed to coincide with the building of the new Herring Bridge at Yarmouth. And it contains both art collections from Norwich and from Yarmouth and material about the idea of bridges and their details, both in reality and the imagination. And we have collaborated with Bam Farren's, one of the firms involved in the Herring Bridge building, and they have led to some drone footage and building materials. And so the exhibition includes a children's interactive area with miniature hard hats and high-vis clothing and building blocks, so they can understand how bridges are built. And we will be doing a workshop early next year for children on bridge building. So that should be fun. At the moment, I'm also working on the last exhibition in the series, based around the Turner painting, which will be about the history of landscape and is next year, end of next year. And that will include four different versions of Turner's interpretation of Walton Bridge, painted from between eighteen oh five and eighteen forty-one. And there'll be more to say about that in further reports. Otherwise, Tim, the senior curator of archaeology, you'll, you could have heard from Robin all about what he's been fully occupied with, but he still continues his archaeological curatorial work whenever he can. And he writes funding applications for new acquisitions and works with finders and landowners based around, work based around the treasure cases. And he works on the Rendlesham Research Project as well. And he also sits on the reviewing committee for the export of works of art. And I think that's, those are the main things that Norwich curators are up to at the moment.
Thank you very much indeed, Francesca, for that. Are there any comments or questions on the curatorial updates? No, in which case, Robin, if I could hand to you for section eight, where we cover other developments.
Thank you, Chair. So section eight starts on top of page thirty-nine and actually segues neatly from Francesca's report in terms of the impact on the costume and textile store from the ongoing works in the Shire Hall, which started with the the programme work put in place to address the dry rot outbreak in the courtroom. And as the works on the roof relating to that outbreak were developed, it was recognised that there were some additional problems which needed to be resolved in other sections of the roof, including that above the costume and textile store. So that was what prompted the mammoth job of relocating the costume and textile store. But it then means we can be confident that the the roof is sound and any plasterwork issues have been addressed. So that element is being incorporated now within the wider programme of work to address the impact of the dry rot outbreak in the courtroom. And that project is progressing well. It's clearly complex within a a tricky historic building, working really closely with, again, the city council's conservation officer team to ensure that every, every step is managed in the right way. But that work is progressing well. At the bottom of page thirty-nine, just the sort of normal update on the wider impact group, which basically is the the forum whereby we monitor all the operational impacts of the Norwich Castle project, including elements such as branding, admissions and ticketing, venue hire, the visitor experience, health and safety, et cetera. So all of that work is obviously continuing alongside the the final run-in to handover. So there's a lot of detailed work going on now around things like the fitting out of the new retail shop. And I've included in the pack an artist visual of what the new shop will look like. And in fact, a lot of those units are now in place and the retail manager is working hard to prepare the stock so that all that can go in in a timely fashion. Likewise, detailed work now being undertaken on the layouts for the the new restaurant, which will be on the floor above the the retail unit. And again, the last sort of stages of planning in place for that. So operational teams are very much working hard to ensure that when the construction works finish, we'll be in a very good place to seamlessly move into operational delivery. And the final section, section nine, is the visitor figures for the period of this report. And hopefully, members can see that the position in terms of visitor numbers at all of the Norwich sites continues to tick up in a very positive way. Obviously, at Norwich Castle, we've seen a really positive impact from the excellent temper exhibitions, including the Last Voyage of Gloucester and the current exhibition Norwich Works. So you can see in terms of year-to-date attendances at the castle, we've seen a really significant increase from this point last year, so eighty-four thousand, as opposed to fifty-eight thousand. Likewise, Museum of Norwich and Strangers Hall have both seen really positive increases in visitor numbers and certainly with sites generally across the service, a real sense that we're returning finally to something akin to post-Covid, to pre-Covid levels of attendance. Obviously, the numbers at the castle currently are impacted by the construction works, but at both Museum of Norwich and Strangers, you can see, you know, really positive numbers. Strangers obviously benefiting from the Centenary celebrations and all the additional activity and marketing attached to that. And then Museum of Norwich, obviously benefiting from the broad programming that's in place, but also we're continuing to offer free admission vouchers to the Museum of Norwich for everybody visiting Norwich Castle to help sort of manage any frustration at the more limited offer at the castle. And again, we've been tracking take-up of those vouchers and that's been really positive. So that's all helped build awareness of the Museum of Norwich, which is a real asset for the city, as is Strangers Hall. So really encouraging numbers. And I think in terms of the service as a whole, you know, feeling that we are getting back to now more something akin to pre-Covid levels of attendance. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Robin, for that. Are there any comments or questions on that latter part of the report? Okay, thank you very much, Robin and Francesca and Jan for that. We move to item six. So we've received a written report from Norwich Contemporary Arts Society. That will be available on the the website if people wish to see it. We've had a written report also from the Friends of Norwich Museums. Felicity, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add or draw our attention to there?
No, not there, this is about the issue. It's kind of a short report. Been relatively quiet recently, but the administration goes on and the Autumn Newsletter is now out. I've left you each a copy, which I hope you'll enjoy. And we've, going on to the Strangers Hall, we've been very impressed by the refurbishment at Strangers Hall in its centenary year. And many improvements have been made. And the F and M, that's Friends, pleased that we were able to help the cost of some of the furnishings at the museum, including the upgrade of, the upgrade of the display cabinets, especially in the toy room. I just wanted to mention about the Friends Tapestry. It's in the last stages of completion. We're very excited to see if it's finished, when it's finished. And we're planning a tea party for the Friends to celebrate the tapestry. And we all invite all the stitchers and others who've been involved in the working of the project about about four years now. And this is all take place in the keep where the tapestry will be permanently displayed. Very close to the time of the opening of the keep in twenty twenty-four, which we're all looking forward to very much. I'm told that there's a good coverage of, for the tapestry on not Twitter, Leonie told me about it today, but if you'd like to look on
Instagram.
Instagram, that's the one. Yes, there's an interesting article and some photographs of the tapestry, which is very nearly finished. And the chairman's report in letter, in the newsletter is quite interesting. And that's focusing on Strangers and an article about Leonard Bodenbroek, of course, the museum. So that's, it'll be of interest to everybody. Thanks. That's all.
Great. Thank you very much, Felicity. And thank you as ever to the Friends of Norwich Museums for what they do. Amanda, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to update us on verbally regarding East Anglia, sorry, East Anglia Arts.
No, just briefly to say how pleased we are to be supporting the visual arts programme across the castle this year. And for people who haven't sort of explored it as a whole, apart from the real excellence of the permanent and collections displays, including the new watercolour display that Francesca spoke about. At the moment, in terms of temporary projects from Norwich Works to the Amarty Golding to Mark Wilshere's Intervention Five paintings, which I won't tell you more about. And about to close, I think, in the project space, the project on the Norwich City walls. Just how incredibly outstanding the temporary projects are at the moment. And there'll be a lot of new projects coming next year. So just to commend the castle on those displays. And that level and calibre of activity, given the redevelopment work going on, is really impressive. And we're just delighted to be able to support it.
Yes, that's great, great to hear. Thank you very much. Councillor Walkin.
Thank you, Chair. I could just very quickly sort of refer back to Felicity's report from the Friends and the comment about the Friends Tapestry. And obviously, I think everybody will be looking forward to seeing it in all its glory when the keep opens next year. It's been going on for four years. I just wondered how many, I mean, you referred to in particular the stitchers and others have been working on that project during that time. I was just interested just how many people have been working on that project. Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly how many stitchers there are, but it's, it's quite a number. It's about, I think about fifteen people, is that about right? And they've been working from home as well. So sometimes, before lockdown, they met together and stitched together. But then after that, people took their work home. So it was lovely. We saw it all brought together. And it's, well, it had, we'd done about, we'd done about two-thirds of it. And then they had a bit of a display and a tea party, which was wonderful to see the progress. And now, of course, it's almost, almost finished, which is remarkable, really. Yeah, so the tea party is sort of much, well, just in the planning, because it's a little way off yet, isn't it? But we will invite all the people who I think would be, would like to come.
Certainly, we'll look forward to seeing it when it's finally completed, indeed. Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Felicity. There was a section of the tapestry of the Norfolk show. And I did myself put a, a single stitch in a blue fish. So I don't know if that makes me one of the stitches.
I think that's certainly part of, part of the overall project. Thank you very much, everybody. If there are no further questions, if I could hand over to Jan and Emma. Oh, yes, apologies. So that's the, the end of this committee meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance today.